Okay.
All right, we will call the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors meeting for May eighth, twenty twenty-three. The order, roll call Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor Ayers.
Here.
Supervisor Lyon.
Here.
And Supervisor McDaniels present as well. We will now have a prayer for the board filed by Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate. If you'd like to join us, please stand. And before we have the prayer, I'd like to have a moment of silence. As maybe you know, I think we had a student senior at Rockbridge County High School killed last night. So have a moment of silence for that.
Lord, we thank you for this time to come together as a board of supervisors. Give us wisdom and understanding to do our job. Today, we recognize two groups that serve protect us in so many ways. We are thankful for them and their families who give so much and seldom receive praise and thank you that they deserve. Would they help make Rockbridge County a great place to live? And now I ask that you be with us and guide us as we go through this meeting and the days ahead. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will hold citizen comments near the beginning of the meeting. We would do our best to take citizen comments remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. Joined by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. The webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press raise your hand button at the bottom of Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No, sir.
All right, we have our recognitions and presentations. We have EMS Week proclamation. Mr. Day, would you like to read that for us?
Proclamation expressing the appreciation of Board of Supervisors of Rockbridge County to local emergency medical service EMS agencies and providers. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States has designated May the twenty first through May twenty seventh of twenty twenty-three as National Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas the men and women of EMS agencies that serve Rockbridge County, the city of Lexington, the city of Buena Vista, provide a vital public service by responding to the EMS needs of our residents and visitors. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices that our local EMS providers. And whereas safety of our citizens is a primary goal of local, state, and national governments. And whereas EMS providers are often among the first to arrive upon the scene of emergencies and disasters, be they medical, natural, or manmade, to provide immediate and often life-saving assistance while fulfilling their missions to provide the best pre-hospital care. And whereas EMS providers participate in numerous hours of rigorous training and continued education in order to enhance the lives, their life-saving skills, and therefore dramatically improving the survival and recovery rate of their patients. Whereas EMS providers and agencies demonstrate a high level of commitment and dedication to their communities and fellow citizens by providing training, field screening, and other life safety awareness programs in their respective localities. Now therefore, we, the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors, call upon all citizens of Rockbridge County to observe the week of May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh as Emergency Medical Services Week during which all of our residents may join in celebrating the dedication of our local EMS providers, past, present, and their families who support and allow them to serve our communities. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adopt this proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Day.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next up, we have the National Police Week proclamation. Mr. Lyons, would you like to read that?
Yes, a proclamation expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Rockbridge County to local law enforcement officers and support staff. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States has designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency serving Rockbridge County, the city of Lexington, the town of Glasgow, and the city of Buena Vista provide a vital public service by safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens in the Rockbridge area. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and that members of our local law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas safety of our citizens is a primary goal of local, state, national government. And whereas law enforcement is one of the few chosen professions that requires the willingness to lay down one's life to protect others. And whereas the daily performance of a law enforcement's normal duty is dangerous, stress-filled, often unappreciated, and requires a special person with a supportive family. And whereas the Rockbridge County Sheriff's Office, Lexington Police Department, Buena Vista Police Department, Buena Vista Sheriff's Office, Glasgow Police Department, Rockbridge Regional Jail, Virginia State Police, Virginia Military Institute Police, Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation Police, Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources Conservation Police, and all federal law enforcement officers are comprised of the finest officers, supervisors, administrative, and support staff that can be found. Now, therefore, we, the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors, call upon all citizens of Rockbridge County to observe the week of May fourteenth through May twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as Police Week during which all of our residents may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And we urge all citizens to take the time to thank those in law enforcement for the important service they provide to all of us. We further call upon all citizens of Rockbridge County to observe Monday, May fifteenth, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes and cause flags to be flown half-mast in this remembrance. Adopted this eighth day of May, twenty twenty-three, the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors. I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. We're fortunate enough to have several of our local officers here tonight. Would you please come up and introduce yourselves to us? We would like that. Come on. Led by their fearless leader.
Appreciate the proclamation. It's a privilege to work here in Rockbridge County. Here's, here's this young, wonderful, good-looking staff that we have here. I'm telling you, they give their best. They give their best every day. That's all I can ask.
Please introduce them.
Daniel Trout. Thank y'all. It's very nice. We certainly appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Us Chestnut.
Thank you.
Bryce Patterson.
Thank you.
That's your word. Thank y'all. Oh, good bar. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
We appreciate it.
Supervisors, please join me down. We'll check.
Check for him.
Yeah, that would be nice. You know, when you get the flag in the back.
Yeah.
Love to go back.
Thank you.
Can you all stand up in the back and get a picture?
Sure. Come on.
Why don't you stay?
Oh, I'm sure it'll be down there.
Stand right here. Somebody hit you.
They're the important ones. So.
All right, everybody look this way. All right, just got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Off and through. On the clock.
All right, next up on the agenda, we have citizen comments. Is there anyone signed up wishing to address the board?
No, sir.
Anyone online wishing to address the board?
Uh, no one with a hand raised.
Anyone present who didn't have the opportunity to sign up wishing to address the board? All right, move on from citizen comments. We have the April twenty-four work session and regular meeting minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those? Any questions, comments, concerns? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
A second.
One second.
All right, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Uh, next up, we have the consideration of school appropriation resolution.
Yes, sir. The total amount for the additional appropriations for FY twenty-three is three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
All right, any questions, comments? Are you known as our motion to approve?
Somebody.
And a second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Day.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next up, we have consideration of the county financial package. Mr. Harrison.
Um, yes, the resolution, there's authorizing appropriations amounting to five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. That's inclusive of the school resolution you just passed. And fuel for fleet services, which is largely offset by revenue, but we still need appropriate on the expense side. Uh, total expenditures for April twenty twenty-three is four hundred and sixty-five, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, fifty-seven dollars and nine six cents. The commissioner of revenue has presented the real estate tax books to the treasurer and as close as we could get, it could possibly get at the equalization rate, we're at fifteen thousandths of a percent. So we nailed it as far as keeping taxes flat. The total year-to-date revenue is forty-one million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And the total expenses is forty-three million, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and four hundred and fifty-eight. Uh, this is a, so we're eighty-three percent to the year. And this is first month expenses as it's either revenue, but as you know, half of our property tax doesn't come until June fifth. So we're optimistic about a surplus. The sales tax revenue is at ninety-one percent. Same with nose taxes at ninety-one percent. Lodging tax is right on target with budget of eighty-two percent. Cigarette taxes at eighty-seven percent and emissions taxes at seventy percent. Just briefly, we are working on to get that budget book finished, but kind of waiting for the state to adopt this budget before putting the final touches on it. So it's delayed. It's not, we've largely have done our part on that. And that's all I have.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there any questions from us, Harrison? If not, is there a motion to approve?
A move.
And second.
Second.
All right, Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Ms. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And Chair votes yes as well. Uh, next up, we have consideration of farmer's market application for Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Slayton.
I can do it.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Dave Reynolds has submitted an outdoor application for outdoor events to hold a farmer's market per chapter four. Of course, that's amusement and entertainment chap- chapter in the county code. Uh, this will be the third year of the community market there in Fairfield. The property is located at fifty-six thirteen North Lee Highway, Fairfield address, of course. Uh, the market is typically operating on weekends, usually Saturdays from nine AM to one PM, May through October. Per section, uh, four point one five E two of the county code, Mr. Reynolds has requested that this application be approved for five-year period. With that, Mr. Reynolds is here in attendance this evening to answer any questions or review anything that I may have missed.
How's it going, Miss Reynolds?
Good, how's it all?
Good. All right.
Anything you want to add to what Mr. Slayton?
No, just appreciate that the board and all the motions that went through to extend this permit for five years is like a fantastic idea and thank y'all for doing that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for holding. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Reynolds or Mr. Slayton? Are you known as their emotion to approve?
So.
And a second.
Second.
All right, uh, Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Thank you, Miss Reynolds.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good luck to you this summer, aren't you?
Don't leave it.
Next up, we have consideration of health benefit options. Uh, how are you?
Yes.
He's on.
Okay. All right, during the budget process, the county was advised by One Digital to prepare for a twelve and a half percent increase for health insurance costs. After further analysis and negotiation, One Digital was able to reduce the county's increase to eight point three percent for FY twenty-four. The county's plan to self-fund its health benefits program is a multi-year commitment intended to lower costs for employees and provide savings for the county by subsidizing years incurring higher claims with savings from years when claims are lower than expected. To achieve this goal, it is recommended that the FY twenty-four budgeted surplus be retained in the county's Health Benefits Fund. Staff in coordination with the consultants have reviewed the expected costs and maximum liability for the county and have included recommendations for setting employee and employer contributions that align with the goals for the self-funded benefits program. In addition to health benefits, staff requested a review of voluntary benefits. The county has had a longstanding relationship with Aflac, offering payroll deductions for individual policies. This year, Bay Corp announced a partnership with Anthem, offering voluntary benefits at reduced rates, including a five percent discount to the county's hybrid disability program, which is a state mandated benefit. The benefits are comparable or enhanced in some areas and provide considerable savings for employees. At the Personnel Committee meeting held on April thirtieth, staff met with One Digital to review the county's FY twenty-four health benefits renewal. And the recommendations from that meeting are as follows. To use the budgeted surplus to fully fund the rate increase for the high deductible health plan, employee contributions for all tier levels in this plan would remain the same and the county would absorb the eight point three percent increase. Also to include the five point three percent rate increase for employees electing the buy-up option on the thousand-dollar deductible plan. Um, in other words, employees on that plan will incur a five, five point three percent increase on their contribution. To increase the county's contribution to employee health savings account from a thousand eight dollars to twelve hundred dollars annually, assuming a dollar-for-dollar match for fifty percent of the contribution. Uh, number four, to transition the voluntary benefits, accident, hospital, critical illness coverage from Aflac to Anthem. Um, there is no cost to the county for voluntary benefits. They are a hundred percent employee paid. Anthem is also offering the five percent discount as previously mentioned. Uh, number five, to transition current Aflac short-term disability plan from individually owned policies to a group platform, which will provide the county the ability to select and manage the benefits and take advantage of public sector offerings for employees. And lastly, to retain the budgeted surplus of three percent in the county's health benefits to subsidize years incurring higher claims with savings from years when claims are lower than expected. Jim Gordon with One Digital is present and is going to review the recommended contribution models and voluntary benefits and answer any questions.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes, sir. Mr. McDaniel, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Doing well, doing well. Thank you for having me this evening. Um, I would just, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I was just saying the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I would just echo a lot of what Ms. Hoak said. The, uh, we did budget as we started through the early part of the year. Uh, we run a little bit above budget, so we recommend about twelve and a half percent rate increase. If I look back at data running July twenty-one through June of twenty-two, which would be fiscal twenty-two, we, we finished that year with a about a four percent surplus, um, going into fiscal twenty-three. As we look at data, January twenty-two through March of twenty-three, running a little bit over budget, about five percent. But the last couple of months have improved and are continue, are, are starting to regress. We don't have really any significant large claim that are pending. We've got two or three that we've anticipated and that are absorbed in the data. So through our analysis, again, we're, we've always budgeted a little bit between our expected cost and our max liability to give us a little bit of protection. We are recommending, as you see, an eight point three percent overall rate increase. Um, currently, the budget is, in total, is two million, one forty-three, two ninety-six in terms of total premium. Uh, keeping our benefits as they are today, the eight point three percent would be just under a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar increase in total. And with the recommendation of using a bit of the surplus to hold the premiums for the employees that are in the high deductible plan flat, uh, the county would be absorbing a hundred and sixty-one thousand, two eighty-two of that, or roughly eight point eight percent. Assuming that everybody remained enrolled as they are, that would shift about five percent of the, five point three percent of the cost or a little, or sixteen thousand, six oh, six eleven, uh, to those who continue to enroll in what we call the buy-up plan, anticipating that they would use it, uh, continue to use it. Keeping in mind that for everyone that shifts down, uh, both the employee cost and the total premium is going to be variable. As you can see in looking at our current premium allocation today, this is the total premium in green. And then you can see that we have a, an allocation um, by both plans for the county. So what we're truly trying to do is show the advantage of being in the high deductible plan. And we're looking at that two ways. Obviously, by keeping the cost flat uh, on a, on a monthly basis for those that are enrolled in the high deductible plan, as you see represented here in the paint today. It's no cost to an employee. And then the, the, uh, appropriate allocations by tier, we're recommending holding those flat, increasing the buy-up option by five point three percent. But keeping in mind that obviously the employees, the ninety-six enrolled in that plan, have the ability to move down and save money, significant money, as you can see, by a family coverage. Um, those are real dollars that, that, uh, that can be saved. And we, we plan to really emphasize the dollar savings that are available to employees through this enrollment period as we enter it. The other thing that I, Ms. Hoak mentioned was the increase in, in the contribution of the health savings account, again, an ongoing enhancement for the staff who move into that. Uh, also kind of using a round number, allowing it to be administratively a little bit simpler for the, for the team. That would allow an employee, if they receive the first six hundred dollars and then match the, the next six at, in any given year to, to be allocating eighteen hundred dollars into their account. Uh, and again, for the ninety-six employees that are enrolled in that high plan, we're trying to give them a very affordable option in the high deductible. Uh, again, on an employee-only basis, there's another twelve hundred that could be put on top of that. You know, bringing them to a potential three thousand dollar savings in it. In, 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 in the initial first year. So that, that is the recommendation, assuming we hold the benefits current with no changes to them. Uh, and we are, um, recommending that we earmark the additional three percent available in the budget for our reserves so we can continue to build a surplus, uh, level to, to be there for the time that we are going to need to have it to, to support our staff members in the event that we do see a, an increase. So that's a little bit of an overview of kind of our recommendations, as Ms. Hoak said, and I'll be happy to take any, any questions from the, the board.
Any questions for Ms. Hoak or Mr. Gordon? Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, sir.
All right, you heard your recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that, uh, any change of insurance would require compliance with procurement. So you may take action on some of this other, but not to change insurance providers from Aflac to Anthem at this meeting.
I don't think they were, I don't disagree, but we, I'm not sure Aflac was ever procured.
Not that I know of. They've served prior to the time that I started with the county. But since this is the first I've seen of it, um, I was just looking at the code provisions and it does require procurement of insurance through, uh, section two point two, forty-three oh three.
Even if the county is not paid for. This is just an optional benefit.
Well, I still think you need to have procured services brought so that various providers have the option of provide.
Let's do very cool, very cool.
Well, I'll be glad to take a look at it, but I, I'm, it's kind of hard to
understand.
Do all the research here.
Yeah, and, and I fully understand this stuff and concern. Um, if it is determined that this is something that can be done prior to the next meeting, um, if the, if the vote would allow that, subject to county attorney's approval, it would be helpful. Is that okay? Or if not?
So the only, the only piece of the puzzle that's, uh, is the switching from Aflac to Anthem?
That's correct.
So we can, we can approve the
Everything but number four.
Rates, right.
Looks to me like, right?
Everything except for number four, is it?
Yes.
So I, I make a motion that we approve everything except number four.
Okay.
And.
One second.
Okay. And, um, as, as to number four, uh, county attorney, county administrator will get together and advise us at our next meeting on that particular item?
I, I mean, it may, it may take longer. I don't know that I'd want to pin this in to.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't, but again, I, I don't know the timeline that, that, that we're dealing with necessarily on.
Well, we've got open enrollment next week, so I think maybe it's something that could be done at a later date. It would just create, it would just.
Well, we've got open enrollment next week, so I think maybe it's something that could be done at a later date. It would just create, it would just. Yeah.
Okay.
We'll come back.
All right.
Yeah.
Good. All right, so we have a motion on table for everything that's been discussed, except for item number four. Any other discussion?
No, is that, uh, like, thank Ms. Hope for all her hard work in getting this done?
Yeah. Yep, absolutely. All right, so we have Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
And Chair votes yes as well. Thank you, Mr. Gordon, as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like just to say, pause for a second. This is, uh, not all really exciting stuff, except to geeks like me. Uh, I mean, this is something we've been working towards. The board has been working towards a long time, and we're finally in a, uh, putting the county in a position of, of negotiating from a position of power instead of just accepting a, an insurer's increase. While we've talked about increases in here, w- we're able to return some of that to employees, save the county some of that. So, uh, it's, it's fairly exciting as we, as we move forward how, how those increases or those savings can snowball as well. So, uh, I just want everybody to know that it's, it's a significant piece of the budget, uh, you know, of our budget, and we're, we're, we've taken steps to, to try to take more control over that.
Good, yeah. Absolutely agree with everything you said. Next up, we have, uh, consideration to vacate North Lee Highway Subdivision Platte. Uh, Ms. Huffman, is that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, Richard Coleman and Brenda Garrett are the owners of a cluster subdivision consisting of four lots in a green space area um, created on a platte entitled North Lee Ha- Subdivision Phase Two. It's recorded in Platte Cabinet Three, Slide four twelve. A copy of the platte is included in your agenda materials. Uh, the lots are identified as tax map number forty-nine sixteen one, forty-nine sixteen two, forty-nine sixteen three, forty-nine sixteen four, and forty-nine ten ten A. The property is located off of Bounder Line Lane in the Walters Creek Magisterial District. Um, Mr. Coleman and Ms. Garrett have requested the vacation of the platte. It would return to its original eight point seven seven acres, uh, if vacated. Uh, no lots in the subdivision have been conveyed to a third party. No subdivision improvements, facilities, or infrastructure have been constructed in the cluster subdivision or on any related section of the property since repredation of the platte in two thousand and four. As a matter of fact, the property has been conveyed several times as the eight point seven seven acre parcel rather than pursuant to this platte. So, um, vacation of the, this portion of the platte uh, requires adoption of an ordinance following public hearing under fifteen point two, twenty-two, seventy-one, two of the Code of Virginia. You have a proposed ordinance included in your agenda materials, and, uh, if acceptable to the board, we'd request that you schedule the public hearing for the May twenty-second meeting, and I'll proceed with the public notice. Um, and the property owners are here to answer any questions or if they'd like to make any comments.
Please come forward if you have anything you want to add to the, if you're good. Okay? Uh, is there any questions?
So right now, all we need is a motion to set a date for public hearing.
Yes.
I move that you do so.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions? All right, Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have the, uh, TCO uh, appropriate appointment, um, for Mr. Barker, whose term expires on April the eighth, twenty twenty-three. Um, I believe we have a application for that from Denise Goad. Um, Mr. Slayton, anything you want to add to, to the TCO? Okay. All right, uh, is there any discussion about Ms. Goad for that appointment? There a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second?
Yes.
All right, um, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Uh, next up, we have the monthly staff reports. Has everyone had opportunity to review those? Any questions, comments? Question? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve as presented? I'll move. And a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Uh, next up, we have board comments. Uh, Mr. Lewis, you have anything?
At this evening, sir.
Mr. Day. Ms. Ayers. Mr. Lyons.
No.
Mr. Suter, you have anything to add? Ms. Huffman. Uh, I believe it was scheduled for next week, the eighteenth, a joint, uh, school supervisor meeting. Uh, given that the state still hasn't produced a budget, I, I don't see no need at this point to meet. Well, how about we wait until June, set a date, once budgets are semi-finalized there, and we can discuss it at that point, if that suits everybody. All right, uh, any other business? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, one, one more. Apologize. Uh, Miss Huffman, that small detail with the public hearing, would that be at our next meeting for the vacation of the platte? Or is that?
Uh, yes, that's what I had in the report. I, I don't think he specified the date, but that's what I took it to be.
I'm sorry, I missed the twenty.
All right, thanks, sir. So, uh, so move to adjourn.
All right, second?
Back him.
All right, Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Please be careful going home.